Thank you, pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On file. Thank you, everyone. Good morning. Welcome, Purple Cat.
I know.
Good luck in group over there. We're getting ready for you to play us some music. So I want to welcome you to our 12th meeting of the year. It is Thursday, March twenty seventh at ten oh five A M. And we'll begin with public comments and your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is David Beatrice. My address is fourteen ninety-one Barbie Drive, Youngstown, Ohio, four four five one two. And once again here on behalf, I am the chairman of the Mahoning County Board of Elections. I am once again here beseeching you to give us a new building. Recently, within the last week, on March nineteenth and again on March twenty-fourth, our building had to be closed. I'm telling you, we are one day away from a disaster on election day. We are playing with the suffrage of the citizens of Mahoning County. It has gotten to the point now, commissioners, where unlike James Bond, I have a license to sue, and I'm willing to use it. You have a con- we have a constitutional duty to protect people's right of suffrage and their right to express their First Amendment and our right to express democracy. And we are at the verge now of a day when election comes and something happens to the building, and we are caught flat-footed. I'm not going to allow that to happen. Now, I've heard a lot of political considerations, all of you have. Those are not our political considerations. Our political consideration is one thing, making sure it is easy to vote and hard to cheat, okay? And to secure our equipment, okay? There are federal laws that I have started to look at on my own. I don't want to go down that path. But we need a building, and we needed it yesterday. God forbid we have to shut down that building a day before or the day of an election. We are going to rob people of their suffrage if that happens. And there's nothing more abhorrent to me as a chairman of a board of elections for that to happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Dave, if I may, for those who don't know, the two tags you mentioned when the building was closed, do you want to respond? I'll notice you want me to.
No, one was I, I know there was a smell coming from somewhere.
It was a, it was from a, a drain that was open. It had nothing to do with the building. It was something that was used in the building, not by, in fact, not by county workers. But that was that occasion. And what was the other occasion?
I guess a telephone pole or something was hit.
See, our building was out of power, Dave.
I, I appreciate that. But if we have a building that had a generator and had things that needed to be hacked, we wouldn't have to worry about them. What my concern is, is that the day before an election or the day of election, something happens to that building, and we are not able to vote people. That is a distinct possibility of happening.
That's, that's our concern too. And, and for you to say that there's political considerations.
Well, I heard that we gotta be here or we gotta be there or, or we have this.
This, this board's gonna make the decision for exactly. It's not, and my, my decision's not gonna be based on politics. I'll tell you that.
Not, I didn't mean, I didn't mean, I didn't mean political decision considerations on that. I meant political, well, we have to be in the city of Youngstown. We have to be this. We have to be there. We just need a building that can do the job so we can do our job. And it has been a long overdue time. And I, 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 I don't know what we are gonna say to the public. If on an election day or a day before an election, something happens and we can't perform our job, what are we gonna say to the public?
Rest assured, this board, myself, and my colleagues are working to those ends. We are.
Okay. I just, we need to work fast, is all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
That's it, the regulation. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
You know, um. No, I, I mean, I'd rather not comment on it right now. I do agree, we need to, we need to do. A lot of people out of that building, and we're working on it. And we've had discussion and we continue to do that. Probably in the next three to four months, if not sooner, we should have some answers.
Before we introduce the Purple Cat, any more public comments? All right, Carol.
I, I'm so excited. I saw Jimmy Sumpet got Youngstown lit the other day, on Friday. And I know this is autism awareness. And I said to him, oh my God, you need to bring the band in. They have a couple tunes from our gang. And so he said, I can do that. And I said, great. Well, I left there and I'm thinking, my God, I gotta call him back. See, I, I, it was, it was real, you know, if you really want him. And so he called me back. He goes, we're coming and we're singing. And I says, great. Every meeting should start with song. So floor is yours, Jimmy, if you have something to say prior to that.
Thank you. Um, you know, we've, we've been blessed by Mahoning County and the city of Youngstown in many ways. You know, we run the Gallagher's Lunch Bucket at the aforementioned Oakville Renaissance Building. And that was afforded us, you know, by the generosity of the commissioners. You know, we've helped fix up that kitchen and good things will happen. If indeed we need to move, we will. And we have a firm foundation because of people. So we're not worried if things have to be changed. Don't worry about us. We are malleable. We will, we will survive and move on. And I know you'll help us in any way that you can. We have a band called The Feral Cats. Uh, it operates out of twelve South Phelps Street, right downtown here. We operate out of twelve South Phelps Street, right here. Um, our band is rather large. We have two drum sets and multiple bass players and guitar players and much percussion. Couldn't bring all that here today. Um, I'm blessed to have Ralph Rich, uh, one of my esteemed staff members here. And Ralph is going to play some guitar. They have two songs for you all today. Um, these are some of my best friends. This is Eugene. This is Mark. And Mark has been quite an inspiration in my life. We went to grade school together. So our mothers put us hand in hand, walking to Dobbin's Elementary, walking to the bus, yeah, to the bus stop. Uh, Kristen is here and Steven is here. So they're gonna sing for you. Come on in a little bit more. The cam, Mike wants us to. We'll see, we'll get in. I'm, I'm gonna bow out. You guys, see, we wanna get into that screen up there.
Come closer to the podium.
This way. Can we move just a little bit so we can make sure you're on the camera?
Here we go.
You see yourselves?
Yeah. We see you. We see ourselves.
Alrighty.
All right. Let's do, uh.
Two numbers for you guys. One is Duke of Earl.
Duke of Earl.
All right. Do, 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 Duke of Earl, 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 do, do. As I walk through this world, nothing can stop the Duke of Earl and cover you. Do, 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 oh my girl, and no one but her to, oh no, yes, ah. I'm gonna love you, oh no, nothing can stop me now, 'cause I'm the Duke of Earl. Yeah, 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 yeah. I hold you to be my dutch, Duke of Earl, to the world, and you gotta walk through my love, Duke of Earl, to the paradise. We will, eh, yes, ah. Oh, I'm gonna love you, oh, nothing can stop me now, 'cause I'm the Duke of Earl. So, yeah, 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 yeah. Oh, I'm gonna love you, oh, nothing can stop me now, 'cause I'm the Duke of Earl. So, yeah, 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 yeah.
One more.
Please, one more.
Three more. What about Runaround?
They need to bring Ray over here for him.
Yeah. Story inside the two. It's about a girl that I want to. She took my love and ran around with every single guy in town. Aww, I thought it was known from the very start. Took my love and broke it. Tell me, keep away from a runner on sound, so I take her smile. Touch her hands, the girl is on my brain. People like cry like I do. Keep away from a runner, I'll sue you. Stew, I was all the guys, Marvin, story from a guy. I have nothing to smoke, girl, no, the avenue. Keep away from a runner, I'll sue you. Great, my guy. Yeah, I did. Keep away from her. Keep away from that girl. I know what I do. Keep away from that girl.
Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you very much. More, more.
Mark, Mark, Kristen.
Will you guys, you guys can picture?
Picture time.
Picture time.
Yeah, they wanna picture you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Let's get a picture. Yeah?
Okay, all right. Okay.
Oh, you want us on it?
Okay, come on.
We'll get a, we'll get a, we'll get a bunch of us.
Megan, before we do that, we want to give Jimmy a, uh, this is the month for autism. We want to give you a, a little resolution from us to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Gino, get in the picture. We want you to be there. Hold on, let's, you hold the award. How about that?
All right.
Great.
There we go.
Jeez.
That is a beautiful.
That's amazing.
There you go.
Thanks for having us, everybody. Thanks for all your help.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Why can't you iterate?
Thank you. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. See you later. All right.
Just like them running meetings.
All right.
I know. Just say yes to everything.
What a celebration.
Monday we had bowling, Tuesday we were, it's really food.
All right, we're going to, uh, open the business board of our meeting and I'll ask for a motion. Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chaffecanti?
Yes, advertise him for bids. Number one, sanitary, pass.
Jill.
Or Jill, sorry.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, this is for Southwest Lake Evan Sanitary Sewer Pump Station in Forest Main. It'll be phase one of improvement number five twenty-nine.
Thank you. Motion?
Motion for the approval of advertisement for bids number one.
Second, roll call.
Yeah, Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanti?
Yes, journal entry number one.
Motion for the approval of journal number one.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti? Commissioner Chaffecanti?
Yes. Agreements, A through D, auditors, and I believe it's Heather.
Hi.
I'm looking for you up there.
Um, this is for the agreement with Mantron Inc., uh, DBA, uh, Metson Tech, uh, for the right to use commercial and split cost data. And the resellers came on Progra in the amount of two thousand nine forty-four sixty-nine, non-general.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
And engineers, Richard Collin.
Morning, commissioners. Um, letter B is a security agreement with Comcast and Illinois, Ohio, Oregon LLC for plan review or inspection services of right-of-way use permit applications at no cost to the county.
Thank you, sir. And sanitary, Jill?
It's an agreement with Elcon Mechanical Piping, uh, for repairs of the sludge line, number two belt press in the number four tunnel at Boardman Wastewater Treatment Plant in the estimated amount of four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars, non-general.
Thank you. And sheriff, I believe we have Adam.
Good morning, commissioners. D is an agreement with Next Star Media Incorporated for an advertising campaign services in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, non-general.
Thank you, Adam. Carol, motion?
Motion for the approval of number two of agreements, A through B.
Second, roll calls.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanti?
Yes, resolutions?
For the approval of resolution.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes, resolutions on awards, two A, engineers?
Yes, letter A is an award of the twenty twenty-five countywide striping program for the Yankee Clipper Company in the amount of one hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars, non-general and low bid.
Hey, thank you. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two, resolution of awards, A.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffecanti?
Yes, resolutions, A through K. Uh, resolution approving the appointment of Captain Gerald DeAngelo to position of E nine one one ordinator as per memorandum of understanding with the sheriff's office. Anybody here to speak on that?
Basically, um, Sheriff DeAngelo has, was working with Maggie before she left to kind of keep the county where we're in compliance with the state. And he and sheriff have agreed to allow him to stand in that position on a temporary basis until we determine which way we go. Um, HR is working on the position description and with, along with EMA and putting some of those responsibilities together. And that'll be coming up.
Thank you. All right, O and D, Jenny?
Good morning. Um, E is a resolution authorizing the contribution of three hundred thousand dollars from the general fund to the support of the, um, Zola Mar. And C is a resolution proving the budget for the ABM Joint Communications District with an additional amount of up to seventy-five thousand dollars for the radio maintenance for the sheriffs.
Thank you. EMA?
Adam.
Adam.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, D is a resolution supportive of grant application, uh, through FEMA for the fiscal year twenty-five, uh, brick grant, which is an infrastructure grant, uh, totaling one hundred and thirty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty dollars with the twenty-five percent local match. Um, the grant would be for power generation, would be for a stationary and a portable generator that were both identified through our hazard mitigation plan that we completed last year.
Great. But I know you worked very hard on that in your board. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Facilities, Jimmy? Or, I'm sorry.
Oh, this would be Dina. Dina.
Dina.
Dina.
Alan.
Yes, he had to go, um, for a meeting.
I'm sorry, Dina.
Good morning, commissioners. On behalf of facilities, uh, this is a resolution approving the appointment of two custodians for the department. And then, um, F is for human resources, a resolution, uh, authorizing Medical Mutual of Ohio to release specific information to the auditor of state for the audit of financial statements.
Okay. Thank you, Dina.
Thank you.
Josh, family, Audrey?
Good morning, commissioners. This is John Carroll. And I'm in place of Audrey. It's okay. Um, letter G is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between management and ASME Local two thousand and one to resolve a labor issue. Item H is a resolution to approve the appointment of one childcare home inspector to the childcare department. And letter I is a resolution approving the appointment of one income maintenance aide and two income maintenance aide twos for the department.
Thank you, John. And risk management?
All right. Good morning, everyone. Yes, this is a, an request for a moral obligation. Um, we had an approved vendor, uh, for workers' comp management for psychological evaluations. However, uh, he was no longer able to provide us with that service due to industrial commission legal time constraints for the submission of evidence. Uh, we weren't able to go through the normal process and we had to secure, um, a new vendor and get her scheduled and get them the report in time. So that's why we're asking for a moral obligation.
Hey, thank you, Kathy. And sheriff, Adam?
K is a resolution in support of the application to the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for the twenty twenty-five Violent Crime Reduction Fund in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents with no match required.
All right. Thank you, sir. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number three, resolutions, A through K.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Midio Agetti?
Yes.
Yes, for the good reward, any elected official department. Carol, Gina?
No, I'm good. I just, I'm so excited that, um, it's just enlightening to have some of my, uh, purple characters. And it just picks up everything that you do. And we, of course, have helped Jimmy suck a lot of things as well as the unions help them with, uh, the kitchen, things we needed to do back. And they're resilient. And I know if anything's ever done there, we'll probably find a response with us. But, um, I mean, how fortunate are we? That we look at people that are not like us and we see how happy. I mean, I've been over to Purple Cat. I've been in the studio. I could interview my kids. We walked up when they had the radio station right here. Honestly, and I've been at a couple of their concerts. It's unbelievable what he does with his, his students and his residents. I mean, it's unbelievable. If anybody hasn't been to the, been to the Gallagher camp, it's just unreal. And they did start using that for respite and also for, like, travels for maybe a family that may wanna have somewhere to go and they need to put their, wanna have their, uh, child or adult child, uh, brought somewhere to have, like, like a, a share candle, yeah, with the lake and animals. And it's just unbelievable what he does. And we need to be thankful for what we have and how we are. Just thank God every day we have people like Jimmy and Sue Phillips and people like that that are out there to do the job. It's very difficult. And to go to Leonard Kurtz and you see with the teachers and principal and everyone else who's there as well as we have Vasco. Unbelievable. We've been to some of those areas. And I give them kudos. God bless them all. But they want to come back. So we're gonna have another outing. Next time, we'll get pizza.
Oh, that sounds.
Get a lot of them.
We spent all the concerts, Carol. You better feed them.
Well, that's all right.
Could we, could Traffic Candy play with them? I heard he plays guitar. I've never seen him.
Oh, no. I told him, I told the other, I asked him, I says, why don't you bring your guitar? You could play with them. They'd love it. And they'd also love it when they have their, their little outings. If you ever wanted to do that, Jimmy Sump would probably just love to have you get on stage and do stuff.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's.
Carol is saying I'll play the instruments. I won't influence myself.
You say.
Well, sometimes. Thank you. So, first of all, the Purple Cat come down here today and we, you know. Now, one guy started singing at the land. I felt like Simon Collins. Where is this coming from? You know, that, that's amazing. And, and the people at Jimmy Sump, I don't know him well. I won't say that I do. But to, to do the work that he does in the environment they're in and to do such good, if, if, have those, those cases of, that has to be a call. You have to, that, that's, he's not taking a paycheck for that job. I think. That, that has to be something you love doing and God bless people, people like that to do stuff like that. Now, we had Attorney Beatrice here earlier. And I just want to say that I didn't run for the seat to represent the people of Mahoning County. Just to hear and listen and not respond. I wish all these seats were filled all the time because, number one, I, I know he has a passion for, for voting in for the board of elections. I know that he does that. And I can understand, but you can't come in here and say, wow, they closed the building twice like it's the building.
And I can understand, but you can't come in here and say, wow, they closed the building twice, like it's the building's fault that a car hit, oh. And our building was out, the sheriff's department was out, everybody was out in that town. But anybody seeing what he said, if he had just said that and walked away, everybody would says, oh, it's because, you know, because of the building, it wasn't because of the building. And the other, the other reason why it closed was beyond our control, and we did the right thing, and we closed the building. And to blame on our politics wasn't fair. It's not fair. And I'm just, I didn't, yeah, I didn't get elected to sit here and get beat up, or, or if he's seeking answers, I'll give him answers. Cause everything I do, the reason why I ran was so I'd have a voice, and I think the people that voted for me had a voice, and, and now they do, and you're gonna get what you get with me. If, if you ask me something, I'm gonna tell you. That's just, that's just how I feel. So I'm not gonna have the county attacked, or, or different things attacked without an answer, because I watched for, I've watched the meetings for years, and I, I just thought that was ridiculous. I'm, I'm gonna speak my piece, because now I have a little bully pulpit, and that's, that's just how I feel.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. I, I agree with my calling, but you know, when you look at a guy like Jimmy Sutton, that's something that, I mean, nobody could think. If, if I was a parent that had a child or a young adult that had those conditions or those disabilities, what would I do? As I physically would get older, it would be much harder for me and my wife to maintain that type of relationship. So Jimmy has expanded this program through Purple Cat, Gavin families. Carol said, he, he has given these individuals and their families a life. He has given them something to look forward to. You just saw it today. Music is a universal language. Music heals through all races, colors, and creeds. Doesn't matter how much money you have. If you turn on the radio and you hear Hotel Californian, or you hear AC DC's Back in Black, Black Sabbath, that kicks me in gear. Hotel Californian. And for them to see the Duke of Earl, that's a whole different time signature key to play, and they had it down, even Mike, you know, your decision. Right? That little pullback, just totally impressive. And, and I've known Jimmy a very, very long time. He lives and breathes this. We support him. We put him in the Oak Hill Renaissance Building. They run a beautiful kitchen. There's a little restaurant in there. Over the moon candy store. These are things that we need to do while we're on this earth is to make people who can't help themselves their lives better. And all I can say is Jimmy Sutton is that person, and his organization and board, uh, that does this. And, you know, with respect to the building, look, we understand the board of elections are not happy. But I cannot control, and neither can the commissioners control, an act of God. I had my neighbor's tree fall on my fence. It ruined a hundred feet of my fence in my backyard two years ago. Lightning hit it, and the fence was destroyed. I had to fix it. If it's on election day and a bomb goes off, God forbid. You know, what are we gonna do? Blame each other? So these things could, in fact, happen, can happen in a new building, but we are working, as Carol said in G and O, to try to see the best that we can do, but it can't happen overnight. I just can't go build a building. I wish I could. You know, give them their, their, their own, you know, sorrow team. But, uh, again, anything can happen. We were closed downtown, like, like Gino said, somebody hit a pole. These things happen when you're sitting. Anything. Look at the building, God almighty, the gas line blew up. I mean, anything like this can happen, and we wanna do the best we can to protect everybody. We certainly want your votes to be counted. You know, so with that being said, we're gonna work to, to the best that we can. With that being said, okay. Nancy, our next meeting?
Next Thursday, right?
Next Thursday, I guess.
Yes.
Alright, Audrey? This is Carol, which is next meeting.
Kathy Jones had something.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Kathy?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to let the departments know that in light of Insight Health's closure of Trumbull Memorial Hospital, along with the, uh, subsequent urgent cares that they have, Work Med in Austintown is one of those, and then they had one in, in Warren. Uh, those are also closed, and some of our injured workers do go there for treatment and, uh, medical management for workers' comp. So our MCO was working with, um, trying to work with our injured workers. If they have any problems, uh, getting another attending physician, uh, call them, you know, they can always get with their attorney, uh, to try to help, but also our managed care organization is working with them, and uh, the Occupational, uh, Medical Clinic at Mercy has agreed to take any of those cases if those people are interested in going. So I just, and if anybody, if any of our injured workers have any problem, they can call me, and I can try to, to work with them to get assistance. If they have legal counsel, just make sure that they know, but I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that.
Kathy, you should probably put out a memo, say that. Maybe you should.
This was just coming up yesterday, so, yeah.
I would do that because our employees should know that. I just don't know how Mercy Health is gonna be able to take on all this. I have no idea how that's.
It's already a very long time to wait. Um, I mean, even to get an MRI, since all these, everything's closing or merging, it's a, it's four weeks to get an MRI, and that's with authorization. And then some, some vendors aren't doing anything unless they have the right paperwork, even if it's paperwork gets approved by BWC. Right now, we're, we're having a lot of problems, so.
Thank you for letting us know. Get the memo out.
Okay.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio.
Yes.
Commissioner Medo Agati? Commissioner Chafficanti?
Come here, what did you say?